Now that the county commission meeting is now in session, the honorable partnership you present, please remain standing.
We're going to call the March nineteenth, twenty twenty meeting of the Hamlin County Land Management Board to order, and at this time we are honored to have with us the Reverend Dr. Gary Brewster, one of our police chaplains, who's going to lead us in our prayer. And on behalf of the county commission, I want to thank you and all the other police chaplains for the excellent job you do for our community.
Well, thank you so much, and that's the first thing I wanted to say to all of you. Thank you for having us, and we really appreciate it when we get the opportunity to be able to serve. When we have an opportunity to pray, we feel like it's the highest honor that we're given. So, thank you for that. Let's bow our heads and let's pray. Lord, I want to thank you that you're bigger than the coronavirus. You're bigger than any country or any world leader, and nothing took you by surprise. But we know that you saw everything coming, and you have made a way of provision. Lord, you've walked ahead of us, and as you've walked ahead of us, for there are answers, if we'll seek your face. Lord, I want to ask that across this room, I pray that you give people wisdom. Lord, I pray that as people would vote on different issues, as people would bring things up in this meeting, Lord, I pray that they would be led by you, that they would hear your voice, that they would have your wisdom that they would speak from. Lord, I want to pray for all those that are sick, and, Lord, we recognize that you said in your word that it is by your stripes that we are healed, and, Lord, we ask for that healing. Lord, we want to ask that this virus would not come close to our people here, but, Lord, protect us. We want to be able to walk in a divine faith because we trust you. We want that divine healing to be our way even before something would arise. Lord, we also ask that you would be with our mayors and with all of our law enforcement that are out there. I pray you'd be with them and protect them. But we pray these things in your name, Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Brewster. This time, the commissioner medic pleads in our prayers.
Attention, salute. I'm going to preach this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be safe. Commissioner Roll call, please. We do have a forum present, so we're open for business. Our first item on the agenda is the recognition of one of our employees, so at this time I'm going to ask Captain Brewster Law, Commissioner Steph, and Chief Mize to come to the corner back here, please. For a brief take.
Commissioner Laniere here is on the battle line, if you ask me, on jail. She's done a very good job, and she's had a job that I wouldn't want. You did the job very well, Captain Commissioners and Mayor, and I appreciate you very much for watching me. I presented the Hamlin County Governor's Year of Service Award. Captain Brewster Law, so fifteen years of service as a gentleman. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain Law. At this time, the chair will recognize Chairman James Steph of the Calendar Rules Committee in court.
Thank you. Out of two A, I make a motion to approve the consent calendar items.
We have a motion to approve the consent calendar items. Is there a second? We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing that, let's vote a motion, please.
Thirteen A zero nine.
The motion is approved.
Item two B, make a motion to approve the record calendar items with the addition of the general fund one oh one, ten thousand dollars to mayor's budget for the emergency expenditures for the coronavirus task force, and the second one is the general fund one oh one, eleven thousand to move money from public service capital projects to sheriff's budget for a body slash car camera maintenance agreement, and that will also be added on seven D, number ten and eleven, under finance. I make that a present form of motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I say.
We have a second. Any discussion? Just. Yeah. Yes. Let your hands go. Chair Baker?
Aye.
Chris Cutshaw?
Aye.
Randy DeBoer?
Yes.
Thomas Doty?
Aye.
Tim Goins?
Aye.
Bobby Hahn?
Aye.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Huxman?
Aye.
Ali Arwan?
Yes.
Mike Minnick?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Howard Shipley?
Yes.
Jim Steph?
Yes.
Thirteen A. The motion is approved. Thank you, Chairman Steph. At this time, we're going to pull out of A under nominations and appointments, and the chair would entertain a motion that Lieutenant Josh Ringly of the Hamlin County Sheriff's Department be appointed to fill the vacancy to the E nine oh one board. Do we have a motion? We need to do this off the board. We have a motion, and second, please. Okay. Sorry about that, boss. Since we need to vote first on the regular calendar items, and we do, do we have a motion and second? Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the regular calendar items as amended. Is there any discussion? Seeing that, let's vote a motion, please. Okay, the motion is approved. Now, we're ready to go to the appointments. Okay. The chair would entertain a motion to appoint Lieutenant Josh Ringly to the E nine oh one board. We have a motion. Second, Commissioner Horne, all right. All of those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Those opposed, the appointment is approved. This time, the chair would entertain a motion that we appoint Mr. Ralph Whipperson, Mr. Earl Cameron, Mr. Danny Young, Mr. Bill Hicks to serve on the Hamlin County Board for Equalization for a two-year term starting on June the first, twenty twenty. We have a motion? We have a second?
We have a motion.
Thomas Doty made the motion?
Second.
Mike Minnick?
Second.
Okay. All of those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion, the appointments are approved. At this time, we will entertain any comments from visitors regarding items that are on the agenda, and before you come, I want to remind you that you are to address the chair, and the chair will not respond to any of your questions, nor any commissioner, according to the rules of this body, will respond to any of your questions. Those will be taken under consideration and dealt with at a later time. Anybody who wishes to address the commission, based on this voting that was had?
My name is Linda Noe, twenty-three forty-three, Joe Stevens Road. I'd like to address item nine B, Architect Engineering Services for the Hale Property Development. I know at the committee meeting, you had discussion of this, and Mayor Britton said he would bring a proposal to you. I understand you have that. I don't think it was in the packets or online, but you have it now today. The problem that I see, and again, it goes back, something I talked to Mr. Shipley about about a week ago, you do not have any organization of your resolutions that you have passed previously. You don't know where you're coming from, or if there's something that has already been passed that covers this, and in fact, there is. Back in June of two thousand six, Rusty Canton helped me prepare a resolution for the use of statement of interest and qualifications in procuring architectural and engineering services. The whole purpose of this was to open it up to people through an advertisement in the paper, through website, through other means, to let architects and engineers know that you were seeking those services so they had an opportunity to respond. I understand Mr. Britton made some calls, and he's brought you, I don't know if there are any more than the one that he brought you, but you have at least one before you. But that's not the way it's supposed to be done. In two thousand six, your resolution said that the Construction Oversight Committee, or whatever other committee appointed by the chairman to look into this, would review those requests, much like you do on the construction management, you come up with two or three, you might interview those people, and then you would select somebody. That is what you, well, you're the previous commission in two thousand six, just like the Joint Economic Board, and nobody knew to go back and find out what the rules were, what the bylaws, what the contract was. Evidently, nobody knew to go back to the minutes and find, have we already dealt with this? And indeed, you have. Now, I don't know the person who has submitted this proposal. I don't care. That's not the issue. The issue is opening it up to all architects and engineers through an advertisement, and the issue is following your resolution from two thousand six and let the Construction Oversight Committee or the chairman kind of point someone else, so the name is on the committee, but you're not following, again, the rules that you want everybody else to.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else who wishes to address the commission? If not, then our next item of business is the approval of the consent counter, and the chair recognizes, well, the chair would entertain a motion that we approve the consent counter, and this is on the board, so if you can get your screen up. Okay. We have a motion. Any other communication? All right. And second, okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing that, let's vote a motion, please.
Item five A thirteen A zero nine.
Okay, the motion is approved. At this time, the chair will recognize Chairman Bobby Hahn of the Education Committee.
Item six A, the West High School renovation project. Put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing that, let's vote a motion, please.
Item six A thirteen A zero nine.
The motion is approved. At this time, the chair will recognize Chairman Bobby Hahn of the Education Committee.
Item six A, the West High School renovation project. Put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing that, let's vote a motion, please.
Item six B thirteen A zero nine.
The motion is approved.
All right, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Hahn. At this time, the chair would recognize Chairman Reggie Ward of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item seven A is the approval of the monthly checks for February, twenty twenty. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing that, let's vote a motion, please.
Item seven A thirteen A zero nine.
The motion is approved. At this time, the chair will recognize Chairman Bobby Hahn of the Education Committee.
Item six A, the West High School renovation project. Put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing that, let's vote a motion, please.
Item five A thirteen A zero nine.
Okay, the motion is approved. At this time, the chair will recognize Chairman Bobby Hahn of the Education Committee.
Item six A, the West High School renovation project. Put that in the form of a motion.
Item six B, the Resolution twenty dash fourteen, an amendment to Resolution nineteen oh two, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing that, let's vote a motion, please.
Item six A thirteen A zero nine.
The motion is approved.
Item six B, the Resolution twenty dash fourteen, an amendment to Resolution nineteen oh two, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing that, let's vote a motion, please.
Item six A thirteen A zero nine.
The motion is approved.
Item six B, the Resolution twenty dash fourteen, an amendment to Resolution nineteen oh two, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing that, let's vote a motion, please.
Item six A thirteen A zero nine.
The motion is approved.
Item six B, the Resolution twenty dash fourteen, an amendment to Resolution nineteen oh two, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. We have a second. Any discussion?
What is that resolution, Howard? I can't remember the numbers.
That was the resolution where we changed it from ten million to ten four million.
I could have remembered the numbers. Thank you.
Okay, that's the resolution that we're dealing with. Any other discussion? Hearing that, then let's vote a motion, please.
Item six B thirteen A zero nine.
The motion is approved.
Thank you, Chairman Hahn.
At this time, the chair would recognize Chairman Reggie Ward of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item seven A is the approval of the monthly checks for February, twenty twenty. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. We have a second. Any discussion?
Seeing that, let's vote a motion, please.
Item seven B thirteen A zero nine.
The motion is approved.
Item seven C, donation to remote area medical grant for five thousand. I put that in the form of a motion.
All right, we have a motion, and we have a second. Commissioner Cutshaw, you recognize.
I'm just wondering, the event was canceled and will be suspended. Do we need to go ahead and do this, or do we wait? I'm not against doing it, by the way.
I think that's a good idea. Maybe we can wait, table it, until we find out when they're coming back, for sure.
They have a date scheduled in September, I think, but, but, I, I, look, I'm not...
If they have another date scheduled, I think we should go ahead and do it.
It's a date schedule.
They got a schedule, not totally.
I'm sorry, Duane, I think you're right. It was another date that was rescheduled in September.
It is, not totally.
I think you need to hold off on it.
We have a motion, and we have a second. In order to hold off, somebody's going to have to make a motion that we table it and consider it a future thing.
I'll make a motion to table it until, uh, for...
It's okay. We have a motion and we table. This is off the board and a second. It's been moved to second. Any discussion about tabling the motion? Hearing that, then let's vote off the board, and would you please call the roll?
Jeff Apers?
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw?
Aye.
Randy DeBoer?
Yes.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Tim Goins?
Aye.
Bobby Hahn?
Aye.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Huxman?
Aye.
Ali Arwan?
Yes.
Mike Minnick?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Dean Shipley?
Yes.
Jim Steph?
Yes.
Okay. The motion to approve, tableing this item is approved.
Item seven D. What? I'll refresh you there on the next slide. Okay. Item seven D one, it's Fund One Oh One, accounts and budgets for two thousand four hundred fifty for rate classification of health insurance, and I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing that, let's vote a motion, please.
Item seven D one thirteen A zero nine.
The motion is approved.
Item seven two, Fund One Oh One, accounting and budgeting, one thousand six hundred forty four dollars, eighteen cents, that's for Amanda Hale, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing that, let's vote a motion, please.
Item seven B thirteen A zero nine.
The motion is approved.
Item seven C, donation to remote area medical grant for five thousand. I put that in the form of a motion.
All right, we have a motion, and we have a second. Commissioner Cutshaw, you recognize.
I'm just wondering, the event was canceled and will be suspended. Do we need to go ahead and do this, or do we wait? I'm not against doing it, by the way.
I think that's a good idea. Maybe we can wait, table it, until we find out when they're coming back, for sure.
They have a date scheduled in September, I think, but, but, I, I, look, I'm not...
If they have another date scheduled, I think we should go ahead and do it.
It's a date schedule.
They got a schedule, not totally.
I'm sorry, Duane, I think you're right. It was another date that was rescheduled in September.
It is, not totally.
I think you need to hold off on it.
We have a motion, and we have a second. In order to hold off, somebody's going to have to make a motion that we table it and consider it a future thing.
I'll make a motion to table it until, uh, for...
It's okay. We have a motion and we table. This is off the board and a second. It's been moved to second. Any discussion about tabling the motion? Hearing that, then let's vote off the board, and would you please call the roll?
Jeff Apers?
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw?
Aye.
Randy DeBoer?
Yes.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Tim Goins?
Aye.
Bobby Hahn?
Aye.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Huxman?
Aye.
Ali Arwan?
Yes.
Mike Minnick?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Dean Shipley?
Yes.
Jim Steph?
Yes.
Okay. The motion to approve, tableing this item is approved.
Item seven D. What? I'll refresh you there on the next slide. Okay. Item seven D one, it's Fund One Oh One, accounts and budgets for two thousand four hundred fifty for rate classification of health insurance, and I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. We do have a second. Any discussion? Hearing that, then let's vote off the board, and would you please call the roll?
Jeff Apers?
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw?
Aye.
Randy DeBoer?
Yes.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Tim Goins?
Aye.
Bobby Hahn?
Aye.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Huxman?
Aye.
Ali Arwan?
Yes.
Mike Minnick?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Dean Shipley?
Yes.
Jim Steph?
Yes.
Okay. The motion to approve, tableing this item is approved.
Item seven D. What? I'll refresh you there on the next slide. Okay. Item seven D one, it's Fund One Oh One, accounts and budgets for two thousand four hundred fifty for rate classification of health insurance, and I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. We do have a second. Any discussion? Seeing that, let's vote a motion, please.
Item seven D one thirteen A zero nine.
The motion is approved.
Item seven two, Fund One Oh One, accounting and budgeting, one thousand six hundred forty four dollars, eighteen cents, that's for Amanda Hale, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing that, let's vote a motion, please.
Item seven D two thirteen A zero nine.
The motion is approved.
Item seven D three, Fund One Oh One, Sheriff's Department for ten thousand, one sixteen twenty-five, and that's for repair of a police car, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and is there a second? We have a second. Any discussion? If not, let's vote a motion, please.
Item seven D three thirteen A zero nine.
The motion is approved.
Item seven D four, Civil Defense, fifty dollars, that's to record a deposit for EMA, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Any discussion? If not, let's vote a motion, please.
Item seventy three thirteen A zero nine.
The motion is approved.
Item seven D four, Civil Defense, fifty dollars, that's to record a deposit for EMA, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Any discussion? If not, let's vote a motion, please.
Item seventy three thirteen A zero nine.
The motion is approved.
Item seven D four, Civil Defense, fifty dollars, that's to record a deposit for EMA, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Any discussion? If not, let's vote a motion, please.
Item seventy three thirteen A zero nine.
The motion is approved.
Item seven D four, Civil Defense, fifty dollars, that's to record a deposit for EMA, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Any discussion? If not, let's vote a motion, please.
Item seventy three thirteen A zero nine.
The motion is approved.
Item seven D four, Civil Defense, fifty dollars, that's to record a deposit for EMA, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Any discussion? If not, let's vote a motion, please.
Item seventy four thirteen A zero nine.
The motion is approved.
Item seven D five, Fund One Oh One, County Mayor's Office for one thousand two fifty, and that's for a tax reminder to the Sessions Court, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Any discussion? Seeing that, let's vote a motion, please.
Item seventy five thirteen A zero nine.
All right, the motion is approved.
Item seventy six, Fund One Oh One, County Mayor's Office of five thousand dollars, that's for the rural area which has been tabled, so I will take that off.
It's been tabled, so let's pull that out. Yes. Thank you.
Item seventy seven, or seven thousand, that's for five thousand in overtime and two thousand in longevity pay for sanitation, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Any discussion? If not, let's vote a motion, please.
Item seventy five thirteen A zero nine.
All right, the motion is approved.
Item seventy six, Fund One Oh One, County Mayor's Office of five thousand dollars, that's for the rural area which has been tabled, so I will take that off.
It's been tabled, so let's pull that out. Yes. Thank you.
Item seventy seven, or seven thousand, that's for five thousand in overtime and two thousand in longevity pay for sanitation, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Any discussion? If not, let's vote a motion, please.
Item seventy eight thirteen A zero nine.
The motion is approved.
Item seventy nine, Fund One Thirty One for Highway and Public Works, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight twenty-nine, for reappropriation of the Kenworth truck that was registered in twenty nineteen, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Any discussion? If not, let's vote a motion, please.
Item seventy eight thirteen A zero nine.
The motion is approved.
Item seventy nine, Fund One Thirty One for Highway and Public Works, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight twenty-nine, for reappropriation of the Kenworth truck that was registered in twenty nineteen, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Any discussion? If not, let's vote a motion, please.
Item seventy eight thirteen A zero nine.
The motion is approved.
Item seventy nine, Fund One Thirty One for Highway and Public Works, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight twenty-nine, for reappropriation of the Kenworth truck that was registered in twenty nineteen, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Any discussion? If not, let's vote a motion, please.[1176.12]
Sixteen twenty-five, and that's for repair of a police car, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a second. Any discussion? If not, let's vote the motion, please.
Item seventy-three, thirteen yay zero nine.
The motion is approved.
Item seven D four, civil defense, fifty dollars, that's to record a deposit for EMA, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? If not, let's vote the motion, please.
Seven D four, thirteen yay zero nine.
The motion is approved.
Seven D five, fund one-on-one, county mayor's office, for one thousand two fifty, and that's for a text reminder to the sessions court, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Say that, let's vote the motion, please.
Item seventy-five, thirteen yay zero nine.
Alright, the motion is approved.
Item seventy-six, fund one-on-one, for county mayor's office, of five thousand dollars, that's for the rural area which has been tabled.
It's been tabled, so let's pull that out. Thank you.
Item seven D seven, or seven thousand, that's for five thousand in overtime, and two thousand in longevity pay for sanitation, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Any discussion? For on the rocks, right?
Yeah.
Okay. If not, let's vote the motion, please.
Item seventy-seven, thirteen yay zero nine.
The motion is approved.
Item seven D eight, funds one thirty-one for highway and public works, twenty-nine thousand, one twenty-five for truck drivers, and a small bit for overtime, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? If not, let's vote the motion.
Seven D eight, thirteen yay zero nine.
The motion is approved.
Item seven D nine, fund one thirty-one for highway and public works, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight twenty-nine, for reapprochi- reappropriation of the Kenworth truck that was registered in twenty-nineteen, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? If not, let's vote the motion, please.
Is that the truck it was wrecked? I got a call from Barry Hughes, and he found a guy that thought could fix it.
I think this, this is the truck that we had problems with.
That was sent back. Yeah, it wasn't the truck that was wrecked, it was...
Wasn't the truck that was wrecked?
No.
Remember the one we had sent back?
We didn't accept.
What it wanted was wrecked, and I'll let him know, he found somebody that could fix it.
Okay, thank you.
Item seven...
The motion is approved.
Item seven D ten, general fund one-on-one, for ten thousand for mayor's budget for emergency expenditures for the coronavirus, that's for, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a second. Mayor Britton, do you wish to address that?
I've got, I've got the, the budget amendment for these two, if you want to see them, let me pass these out. I'd like to tell you a little bit about what we're doing as far as the coronavirus situation.
Okay, who did the second for the motion for item ten? Okay, Thomas Doty volunteered second. Thank you, Thomas.
What, um, there should be two, two budget amendments, one is for the county mayor's office, and then one is for the sheriff's department. The county mayor's office budget amendment for ten thousand dollars, and then, uh, the, uh, for the sheriff's department's eleven thousand dollars. But what, what I want to just discuss with you a little bit, I think should have been at your seat, is a copy of our coronavirus response plan that was activated this week for county properties. I met with county officials and county departments on Tuesday, and we reviewed the document, and basically, we followed the, the level plan that the board of education implemented. And so, we're at level one currently, which is that there are no confirmed cases in Hamlin County. Every, at three o'clock every afternoon, the Tennessee Department of Health issues the latest report on confirmed cases of the coronavirus in Tennessee. This afternoon, there, there were none in Hamlin County, I think there's three in the Lakeway area. And, so I think two in Sevier County, one in Jefferson County, I think. Or one in Sevier, one in, uh, oh, hmm, see, one in Sevier, one in Jeff, one in Flager, I think. But anyway, uh, so you can go on the web, if you go tn.gov slash health, and they have a whole section on Department of Health and their coronavirus, what they're doing there. We formed a task force about three weeks ago, as things started heating up a little bit in the United States with the coronavirus, and the deaths were reported in Washington State. And so, we have on this task force, we have, um, we have city officials, Mayor Chestney and Tony Cox, city administrator. We have officials from our state Hamlin Hospital, from HealthStar, from the Health Department, medical examiner, Tom Thompson, joined it today. We have the EMS director, Danny Housewright, is on there, along with our EMA director, Chris Bell. Let's see, that's, that's, that's about it, and Tony Miska from Walter State. So, we have all those folks in the room, and we, we kind of, we discuss what's going on, needs to happen, supplies that are available. And we started on Monday afternoon, a video that Dr. Perry records every day, an update. It's the task force update, and it's on the Board of Education website, if you go on their website, there's a coronavirus task force button, you click on it, you get access to videos, and they're updated every day on what's going on. So, so we're been monitoring the situation for the past two and a half weeks, and so, we think we've got a good understanding of what's going on, and the challenges that are in front of us. One of the things we decided today was to pursue and go ahead and plan for an emergency operations center if things turn upside down, so that we'll be prepared. And it's all about being prepared. So what I'm asking for, he, well, let me talk about the response plan for the county. There's four levels, we're in level one, basically, level one is, we encourage all departments and all employees to practice the, what the CDC recommends as far as hygiene, and then for the social distancing. And we are also asking folks to have business with the county, to come to the county buildings, but not bring a lot of people with them, just to limit our, our traffic in, in the courthouse and justice center. Last Friday, the state Supreme Court, of course, canceled for, for the next two weeks, in, in all courts, and that includes Hamlin County as well. So, that's kind of where we are. Level two is when there's a confirmed case in Hamlin County. One of the main points in, in level two is when, is that folks who have compromised immune systems, we ask for the department heads to send them home, or put them in back office. If they're on the service counter, let's say at the county clerk's office trustee, if they put them in back office, or they send them home. And then, level three is when we have a confirmed case involving an employee or a family member of the employee, and level four is when we have multiple cases in, in Hamlin County. What the request, funding request is today is, is just, I'm asking for ten thousand dollars, just what if? Money that, that I would have available to purchase personal protection equipment if we need to, which, right now, we have a, a request before TEMA to supply some to our, our law enforcement, sanitation and coroner employees. So, but ju- in case we need to help fund some of the items in the emergency operations center, those types of things. I'll report back monthly on how the money's spent, if it is spent, if there's no need to spend it, then we won't. But I would like to have it already in place in case we need to. So that's, that's the request.
Do you want to make any comments about the electronic meetings that the legislature is considering?
Yeah, I talked to Dr. Perry this morning about that, and, and we don't have the technology in place here, but the school system does. And so, if, if, if the law passes, then we'll investigate that, and, and the, the school system has pledged to help us with it, if we want to hold electronic meetings in April.
Okay, any discussion from any of the commissioners? We're voting this off the board, so call roll, please.
Jim Aker?
Yes.
Chris Tetchaw?
Aye.
Randy DeBord?
Yes.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Tim Goins?
Aye.
Bobby Hawn?
Aye.
Tim Warner?
Yes.
Joe Huntsman?
Aye.
Eileen Arwin?
Yes.
Mike Minnick?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Howard Shipley?
Yes.
Jim Stepp?
Yes.
The motion is approved. Item seven D eleven, general fund one-on-one, eleven thousand, the move of money from Public Safety Capital Projects, the sheriff's budget for body and car camera maintenance agreement, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thomas Doty second.
And what, what that is about is, the sheriff's department funded that line for a maintenance agreement for the, the body cameras and the car cameras. And so, they, we have some money, and that they were going to buy support posts and the trail cars for their mobile data terminals, and they want to use the money to pay this maintenance agreement instead of buy the, the posts. Just moving the money.
You said they underfunded. If not, then, call roll, please.
Jim Aker?
Yes.
Chris Tetchaw?
Aye.
Randy DeBord?
Yes.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Tim Goins?
Aye.
Bobby Hawn?
Aye.
Tim Warner?
Yes.
Joe Huntsman?
Yes.
Eileen Arwin?
Yes.
Mike Minnick?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Howard Shipley?
Yes.
Jim Stepp?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is approved.
Item seven E, employee life insurance, I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second? We do have a second, any discussion? If not, then let's vote the motion, please.
Item seventy, twelve yay, one abstain.
The motion is approved.
That's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman DeBord, at this time, the chair will recognize Chairman Tim Goins of the Public Service Committee.
Thank you, Chairman, the Public Service Committee ordered, and the motion we approved, a five-year reappraisal plan for Hamlin County.
Alright, we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second, any discussion? If not, then let's vote the motion, please.
Item eight A, thirteen yay zero nine.
Okay, the motion is approved.
Item eight B, resolution twenty sixteen, authorizing continuous five-year re- uh, reappraisal cycle. I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? If not, then let's vote the motion.
Item eight B, thirteen yay zero nine.
The motion is approved.
Item eight C, memorandum for understanding between the Hamlin County and the Division of Property Assessment, Tennessee Controller of the Treasury, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? If not, let's vote the motion, please.
Item eight C, thirteen yay zero nine.
The motion is approved.
Item eight D, surplus auto of Alabama Bill, Hamlin County Sheriff's Department. I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? If not, let's vote the motion, please. Come on. You're working.
Good.
Item eight D, thirteen yay zero nine.
Motion is approved.
Item eight E, agreement for donation between the Hamlin County government and the outstanding services, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? If not, let's vote the motion, please.
Item eighteen, thirteen yay zero nine.
The motion is approved.
Thank you, Chairman, that's all we have.
Thank you, Chairman Goins, at this time, the chair will recognize Chairman Tim Warner, Chair of the Jail Justice Center project committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, of the College Jail Justice and project committee. Item nine A, Justice Center project management services.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Commissioner Neesmith, you recognize.
They've been some comments whether we need him or not, we've got an architect. Isn't that what the architect felt, that we have to have him, somebody on the other side of the night?
Yeah, and, and the architect will, will tell you, they recommend that we have a project manager like this. Their contract calls for one visit a month, and what this position will do will be there weekly, if not daily, or multiple times a week, supervising, um, all the work, they start, actually, they'll start work, um, at the end of the, actually, the start of the construction drawing phase, it'll be before construction starts. And they'll represent us, and the comp, the architect, the architect works for us, but their fee is also dependent on the cost of the project as well. So, th- this position, we would pay a flat fee, and, and then possibly, I mean, that would be up for negotiation, but the way that the RFP's written, it would be a flat fee, and, um, they would, they would be our advocate in, in the project.
We know what that fee might be?
No. Pardon?
How much more money is that going to add to, to the project?
We haven't bid it yet, that's what this documents the bid on. So that, my guess, Wayne, now we're talking, it'd be, they'd be working for around two and a half years, and it'd be a couple of hundred thousand dollars or more. No, 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 for the whole term.
But you couldn't say it was...
Correct.
And the final approval still is up, it's up to this document. I mean, he just put him down.
Yeah, we're, we're just asking, putting it out.
Curiosity, and was he got any responsibility? Reason I'm saying that, I remember that Landmark County, all of you went down, they had Roger Pack, they had cracks all over the floor. Is that, isn't that his responsibility to see that doesn't happen?
Yeah. I'm, I'm, I mean, I don't think there's any perfect system. But a, but a project this size, it's, it's needed, in my opinion, and others who are more educated than us.
Any other discussion?
Is there anything in your bill that we've made for them or anything like that? That would be in their pricing, you know, when they, when they come back to us with their pricing, if, if there's, let's say, travel costs, copies, stuff like that, that would be in the pricing.
Any other discussion? Let's vote the motion, please.
Item nine A, eleven yay, two nine.
Okay, the motion is approved.
Item nine B, architect engineering services for the Hamlin property development, I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second, any discussion? Commissioner Neesmith?
Would that go out for bid?
No, it did not. I may...
Would it?
Pardon?
Would it go out for bid?
No. Not, no, not, that's not what it will, let's put it this way, that's not what I'm proposing. And if, if that's what you want to do, it won't go out for bid, it'll go out for request, request for qualifications. And for professional services like this, architectural services, you don't bid it, and it's not necessarily, it's not necessarily based on cost, it's based on the qualifications of the, of the professional and the term of the firm. And, you know, what, what Mrs. Noe said about the local rule, that was put in place, I didn't remember it until she brought it up. And, so what I did is I contacted three firms, got their qualifications, got their availability, and then, I talked again with Mr. Wright from, from Greenville. He's done some historic projects, I, if you, he's, I, he's been to the property a couple of times, and he's, he's well qualified for the work, he's got a good reputation. I've called some of his folks that he's done, um, work for. What I would ask is, is that you, that you waive the requirement for publication, and, and authorize me to negotiate with Mr. Wright. Because that, that's the next step, is negotiate a fee. You want to negotiate with October, you know? No, it would, it would be him, because you can't, you can't negotiate with October, if we can't come to an agreement, then I go to the next. And the, the three firms that I talked with, whether Mr. Wright, Mosley, who's doing the jail project, and partners have an office, those were the three firms I talked to.
Any more discussion?
Are we, we're talking about all the architects, the house too, remodel it? Yes. And where the... The availability, for reach out, place outside. Yes, and, and the partner. It's, it's a complete thing for everything at the end of the... Correct.
Any other discussion? Let's just be clear, what, what, what we're, um, if we waive two thousand and six, this is, this is not a mini project.
No.
This is only professional services. By adhering to two thousand and six, we're not only the latter project, it doesn't necessarily change action, is that correct? Any other discussion? If not, let's vote the motion, please. Do we need a second? Yeah, we've got a second. My screen's not working, so I'm having to overlook Thomas's shoulder there, there's a second on there, it... Mr. Chairman? I need Joe Huntsman and Chris Tetchaw. Okay, Mayor Britton? Okay?
Item nine three, ten yay, three nine.
Okay. Mr. Chairman? The motion is approved. Do we need to address, does the body need approval?
I, I would ask that, that you clearly state that you're waiving that reservation, that requirement.
Well, I understood that that was in the motion.
That was in the motion?
Can we hear it?
Okay.
There's no difference in that.
Alright.
Do you understand that? Clerk? The motion should state that we are waiving the...
The...
That's what any of the tapes says.
Resolution that the architectural service solutions be publicly solicited. Advertised.
The final number, the final, the final number, that's coming back to us, I didn't...
Yes.
Okay, Chair.
Item nine C, core drilling bids, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Commissioner Neesmith?
Is this a decision of what they already done?
Yes, yes, and this is by the same firm that did, did the, actually, it was twelve holes, that was done a year ago, nine of them on that block. And, uh, that, that firm, um, working with, this is like a change order to that contract that we had with them a year ago, and that firm has been in negotiate, or not negotiation, consultation with, with Mosley. And they identified where six more holes need to be drilled, specifically for the, the foundation and the support beams. And so, that's what this, this will pay for, and they don't anticipate any more core drilling being needed to done after the, after this.
They gave you fresh one.
It's fifteen thousand.
What's the other?
It was nine. But it wasn't, this goes all the way down to the bedrock, and this is, is more, that was, a, a focus of the other twelve was the, the soil, soil content, the soil quality, and, and this is, and this is more about, I mean, they're going to bedrock, making sure there's bedrock that they'll drill down to for the support beam.
Any more discussion? No, let's vote the motion, please.
Item nine C, eleven yay, two nine.
Okay, the motion is approved. Aren't we addressing item D?
No, we're withdrawing it, I don't have any, any rights for seeing it.
Okay, item D is being taken off. Thank you, Chairman Warner. At this time, we would entertain comments from the public about general items. Nobody come in with the podium?
Give me a minute.
We will, take your time.
I had the opportunity to attend your committee meetings earlier this night, for the commissioners that fought for our freedoms of speech. I was very disappointed that they didn't think the taxpayers had the right to have an appeal. I do appreciate you being willing to let us have our opinions tonight, but I was very dismayed at the comments and the behavior that I saw out of some of your commissioners, okay? We, the taxpayers, are the ones that pay the taxes that put you down. We should have a right to our voices and our opinion, and I think that's what we fought the battles for during the wars, was our freedoms, and freedom of speech was one of those very terrible situations. I'm ashamed to admit as a taxpayer that I heard a commissioner say this, and I need to say it, they done voted, they done made the... They've done votes, they've done my decision. Votes need to answer to the taxpayers. Maybe you don't think we can. I think we do. Some of you are very responsible, some of you, I'm very proud of, some of you, I'm very disillusioned of. I hope God straightens you out before it's too late.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
I bear a lot of wood, live on Ella Road in Washington. I call your attention to a little thing called the Bill of Rights. And if there's a little thing says the freedom of the people to peacefully assemble and approach their government for redress of grievances. I listened to you at that committee meeting, telling us, just forget it, the decision's been made. You don't override the Constitution. We're going to keep coming back to you because we got a grievance. Some of you all in here are business owners. If I went to that business owner and I said, look, you got a choice, location A, location B. Location A is going to cost you twice as much. In the future, you're going to have 100% more manpower, and you're not going to have any room to expand or grow your business. Location B is going to cost you a lot less. It's going to be 50% of the manpower you pay at the other location. You've got plenty of room to grow and expand. If you've got any common sense at all, you know which location you're going to choose. But this commission is hell-bent on you're going to charge ahead with giving us a 76 million dollar boondoggle over here. Why? Is it your ego? You're determined that you're going to prove you can have it your own way? You attempted to throw the sheriff into the bus last time because he wasn't here, didn't know a representative from the jail was here. You're going to blame it all on him, but he wouldn't have no input. You want to see the personal message he sent me? How that he approached y'all how many times and got tired of beating his head against the wall because you wouldn't listen to any of his advice and just threw everything he had out the window? The people I hear are realizing what y'all are doing. And we can't make no sense of why you'd push something on us that makes no logical sense, no financial sense, that's going to give us a future like that. So, please, that's the one conclusion. If y'all got an ego problem, that you're just wanting to prove that you're in charge and going to do it your way, or somebody's getting their bat scratched and their pocket padded, then we're not going to quit shaking that tree till something falls out of it. And you better hope what falls out of it ain't enough to make sure that y'all were a guest in your 76 million dollar boondoggle.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
Karen R. Wood, 1501 Ella Road. Uh, we got here a little late. I was hoping to, uh, address ahead of time before the monthly check approvals, but, um, still, once again, as I've foreover, a lot of the, a lot of the checks, a lot of the federal spending within this, uh, county and the offices, just wanted to point out that, uh, all of you approved, this go around the jail, the medical and dental services that you approved were just over $97,000 for one month. I don't know if anybody, you get these, these were available at the, uh, committee meeting at which I got and looked at, um, of which, uh, as I've got to get more information, $53,000 to Southern Health Partners, which, um, I'm wanting to be able to look at, uh, some kind of contractor agreement exactly as to what they cover, with $44,000 of additional expenses outside of, uh, medical, supposedly affordable medical dental services for jails. But, one thing that I'm want, that I'm wondering, and, uh, going to be digging more into, and would like other people to be able to think about, and this is partially because this is videotaped and other people to start thinking about, out of all the inmates, over $97,000 in one month of medical expenses, what percentage or how many of these inmates are actually convicted and serving their sentences? How many of them are the state prisoners that were supposed to be, oh, we're making money, the state pays us $35 a day? Well, that's a little over $1,000 a month for state prisoners. And, um, if state prisoners, this is state reimbursed for outrageous medical expenses for whatever reason, I doubt it, I, I've only heard that $35 a day, which in 2017, it was documented that, uh, through some of, uh, the archive things for you guys, that our actual expenditure per day is 4250. So, we're not making money at $35 reimbursement from the state, we're losing, still losing money. And then, another, what percentage of all the inmates are actually, can't make bail and just waiting for a trial date? And we're still yet burdened, taxpayers, with paying their medical bills. Over $97,000 just this month that you guys just approved, no questions, none of them, that's outrageous. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
When helping 91, 50, with what crap, I'm not going to tell you, I'm a taxpayer, y'all already know that. But what I am going to say is, you all are servants of the constituents that voted y'all in. Now, how many of you all would be county commissioners if you didn't have your insurance 100% funded?
Thank you for comments. Does anyone else wish to address the commission?
Ms. London Oe, 2343 Joe Stevens Road. A lot's been said tonight, but it's very true. This commission, particularly once you, the new people took over in 2018, you've been led around and you've been bleeding money. And it's rubber stamping virtually everything that's come to you regarding the jail. Why can't you stop, why are we foolishly consistent instead of looking at it and saying, we never had a justice center problem? We've never been written up for a justice center problem? And yet, we've been $20 million to incorporate a new justice center? When you could spend $5 million and have a really nice justice center where it is through a renovation? Why are we so held in, as he said, to keep spending money, to try to go to the max? Why are we not considering the one level similar to Coffee County? Similar to the wagon wheel design that the sheriff proposed and put on his website, his Facebook? All the logic in the world is there regarding costs, lower interest because you've got lower costs, less staffing, which means from now on, you'd be saving money with that. So, why is it that we cannot stop and look, or won't stop and look? I know you can, and you know you can. The people are going to wonder, of course, I realize the time situation, maybe we don't have to implement the tax increase until after we've all been re-elected in 2022. But you are doing this to your neighbors, your family, your friends, this community, when you could save money. Finally, of course, Mr. Shipley mentioned, and I've been following the state legislature on the Open Meetings Act and the concern with the coronavirus. We certainly have a problem, and I sympathize what the state is evidently doing, is they're going to recess for about two weeks before they come back. I'm concerned that you're going to be having meetings, and you're going to shut the public out, or you're going to sit at home and push a button, and you're going to eliminate public comments. And this is during the budget time. That's the big thing. And you're going to be approving a project management contract. You're going to be approving a construction contract soon. And all these items and an architect's contract.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else who wishes to address the commission? If not, we stand in judgment, make our decision, and go to the Hamlin County.